I'd like to call the April 7th of the meeting of the Mammell City Council to order a first order of business is invocation and pledge of allegiance, and Alderman Anderson's going to lead us in that tonight, so if you'd all please rise.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for giving us this beautiful day to come before you and do the city's business, and I hope that we do this to your approval. Please be with all the men, women, and family that protect our beautiful country, and please help guide, guard, and direct us as we do the city's business. In your name, amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Next item is special guests and announcements, and we were supposed to have some people with us tonight, but there was a death in the O'Neal family, and so they cannot be here tonight, and so they should be at our next council meeting to receive the key to the city. Next item is the approval of the minutes on March 17th regular meeting. All the council members have a copy of those minutes in their packet.
I move we approve them.
Second.
Have a motion as second to approve the minutes of March 17th. Is there a discussion on that motion? Not all is in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Next item is public comment. I've only got one public comment card tonight, and it's on, it lists the fire station, so I don't know exactly what they want to speak on, so we've got mayor's comments on fire station, and then we've got the master street plan, so I guess I will let them speak at this time, because we really don't have an agenda item for the fire station, so it would be an item that's not on the agenda. So, Mr. Covey, if you would come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Carl Covey, I live at Three Club Manor Drive, and my apologies for being off the agenda. I thought that was on the agenda. It's pretty difficult for me to make it to these meetings, y'all meet kind of early for me, but I just wanted to speak on that particular location that y'all are considering for a fire station, and certainly come out opposing that location. I've always, you know, we've lived on Club Manor now for seventeen years. We lived down at thirty-four for about six, and liked the street a lot, and rather than add on, we moved down the street. So, it's a great spot, and we love that gazebo that was in this space that y'all are considering. I've always been surprised that it wasn't rebuilt. You know, we've had scout events there, soccer practice there, I mean, that area is a real nice spot. It's green space, open space, I'm not sure how it's characterized, but what a tragedy to convert something like that into essentially commercial property. I mean, I feel as strongly about that as I do about overhead power lines. I mean, I don't want us to do something that's, seems to be more cost-effective or cheaper at the expense of the good of all of us. I mean, it's a lot cheaper to put overhead power lines, but my goodness, I don't want us to look like Mammell Boulevard, you know where I'm talking about. So, you know, I would just say there are a lot of folks that aren't able to make it to the meetings to express how wonderful it is to have these spaces and this atmosphere and environment here, and I would certainly urge y'all to do everything you can to try and maintain and sustain that in that area. That's really all I have to say. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Covey, and it was on the last council meeting's agenda, and it was tabled until the next council meeting. The vote on the resolution, it would be on the twenty-first.
Oh, I thought it was the fourteenth. I was trying to schedule it so I could make it all of these, because unfortunately I enjoy talking about this, so it's twenty-first, not the fourteenth.
Yes, sir. Be two weeks from tonight. Yes, sir. All right. Thank, but, 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 thank you for coming, though. Next item is the financial statement review, and that's done at the second meeting each month. Next item is procedural motion. I need a motion from the floor that we read all resolutions and ordinances by title only.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motion second that the council read all resolution and ordinances by title only. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all is in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. First item under unfinished business is the third reading of ordinance number eight forty-four amending animal ownership and care fines and fees. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number eight forty-four, an ordinance amending fines and fees concerning animal ownership and care in the City of Mammell and for other purposes.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, will you approve ordinance eight four-four?
Second. It's been motioned and second that the council approve ordinance number eight forty-four. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, Mr. Clerk, roll call, vote.
Alderman Lewis.
Yes.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Norris.
Yes.
Alderman Hoag.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Saunders.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item under unfinished business is the third reading of ordinance number eight forty-five regarding construction and remodeling permits. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number eight forty-five, an ordinance amending the requirements for applications for construction and remodeling permits in the City of Mammell and for other purposes.
If we approve ordinance eight forty-five?
Second.
It's been motioned second that the council approve ordinance number eight forty-five. Is there a discussion on that motion? Not, Mr. Clerk, roll call, vote.
Alderman Hoag.
Yes.
Alderman Norris.
Yes.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Lewis.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Saunders.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is the second reading of ordinance number eight forty-six amending a master street plan. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number eight forty-six, an ordinance amending the master street plan for the City of Mammell, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
No action is required on this item tonight. There's no questions on it, we'll move on to the next item. Which is the second reading of ordinance number eight forty-seven accepting dedication of streets and drainage. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City.
I think you said second reading, isn't it the first reading?
It's the second reading.
Okay, I'm sorry.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number eight forty-seven, an ordinance accepting and confirming the dedication of certain streets drainage in phase two of the villages of New Bedford in Mammell, Arkansas, upon the fulfillment of certain contingencies and for other purposes.
There's no questions on that one, it's also on second reading, it'll be on third reading at the next council meeting. Moving on to new business, we have the first reading of ordinance number eight forty-eight accepting dedication of streets and drainage. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number eight forty-eight, an ordinance accepting and confirming the dedication of certain streets drainage in phase five through eight of Osage Hills in Mammell, Arkansas, upon the fulfillment of certain contingencies and for other purposes.
Okay, this one is on first reading. If there's no other questions, it will move on to second reading at the next meeting. Moving pretty quick tonight.
Uh-oh, I messed this up here.
Alderman Mosley? Well, I thought everybody was trying to get to see a basketball game tonight, I didn't know if that's what it was or not.
I guess I was looking at this map, and I'm trying to make, I'm having a little trouble understanding.
Okay.
I think I see Manitou on there.
Yes, sir.
And this is all things that will be, this is all development that'll be on the right side, will it tie into Mammell Valley Estates?
It will, it will eventually, but there's still another phase of Mammell Valley Estates that has to build a section of Mammell Valley for it to connect.
All right. Now, the road that's eventually going to go down to the peninsula, does it come out of this area in some manner?
Well, it's not in, it's barely shown on this map. If you look where, at the center of the page, you kind of see a T, or not a T intersection, but a cross intersection right there, it's in the middle of a curve.
Okay.
That road that's going to the southwest right there is the road that goes, that's the other end of Mammell Valley that will ultimately go to the peninsula property.
Okay.
So, it's, trying to see a lot number right there, Lot eighty? It's right beside Lot eighty.
Now, that, that intersection's already in there.
That intersection is already there, and actually, this road is always, is already Phase Two A and Phase Three is also in.
Okay, all right, all right.
So, Manitou is completed all the way to the end of this map that you see, so this is only for Phase Five, Six, Seven, and Eight, is what this is talking about dedication for.
All right.
And that includes that little cul-de-sac on the right as you're coming up the hill up Manitou, and then portion of Mammell Valley, and then a portion of Manitou Court, and a portion of War Eagle Point, I think, is what it's, it says Manitou on here, but it's actually War Eagle, name of the street's War Eagle, so that's wrong, we need to get that corrected.
And it looks like maybe a water tower's going to be up there eventually.
There is land that Mammell Water Management currently owns on that piece of, on that piece of property that's left out there as tract one.
Okay.
That is correct.
All right, that's all I need, thank you very much.
Any other questions on the map or the ordinance? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the mayor's comments. The fire station property search, I have been looking at property in Mammell, in the area where the fire station was cited to go. I've also gone beyond that area to look at some properties, and I looked at about six properties just based on websites and that sort of thing, checking square footage prices, and got with the architects, and to try to keep from redoing a schematic design. We don't have a final design on the fire station, but we have a schematic design on the fire station, and that would require approximately two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-foot width to have a drive that goes all the way around the building, basically, and then enters the bays through the rear to prevent a truck from having to back up, basically, when it enters the front of the station. It would have to pull up and then back up, similar to what it has to do at Station Two currently now. So, try to prevent that. There's possibly three sites that might work in that area, and so what I'm asking the council tonight is to give me permission to start negotiations with some real estate agents to move forward on a possible site. No, the offer and acceptance might be signed by me, but I would not obligate the council to fund any monies or anything like that. That would come back to the council for their approval. Basically, I need to turn in an offer and then see if they counter it or something like that, but it would not be, it would clearly state in there that this must be approved by the council before we can move forward on that project. Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. You said that you had three sites, potential sites, that you would like to explore further, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, now, one of our concerns and that drew us to the present location, or proposed location, is the overlapping areas for the fire department.
That's correct.
Does, do the three sites that you're talking about, do they suit equally well with the overlap or non-overlap?
One of them does not.
Okay, or should we even consider that one?
Well, and I, I think, you know, I've got a ranking on them, and I'm not going to tell you the properties, because I don't necessarily want the real estate people to find that out. But, so, but I think we've got to have a plan in place so that we might have to resort to Plan C. I hope we don't get to that point, but that would, that would be, basically, there's three sites that it could fit on. Let me rephrase that question now. Are they the best, is one of those the best location? No, it is not, so, yeah, as far as the overlap and the one-and-a-half-mile driving distance, that is correct.
I ask that because, because after talking to certain people, and I'm trying to be secretive here, so I don't get anybody in trouble, but...
Well, we're not being secretive, we're just not.
Well, you know what I mean.
Understand.
Some comments been made to land over by, close to Regions Bank, behind the, whatever that bank is now.
It's former MBA location.
Former MBA. And the way I understood it, that if we were to relocate it to that point, we would create a greater overlap with the current fire sta, new fire station, and it would probably not be sufficient to cover the rest of Western Mammell. So, I guess it's in that sense that I'm concerned about the location.
Right. No, and it would actually reduce the overlap, not, not make a greater overlap, it would reduce the overlap with the existing station.
Oh, really?
Yes, but it would, as you said, move it further away from the western side of Mammell, and would cause a gap, basically, not an overlap in that area.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Johnson?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment on that. Hey, the worst coverage is the northern fire station. I mean, if you look at the circles, they cover less of Mammell, and so any area back out here is going to improve our area. But you look at the north end, that's where the shortage is. Don't get me wrong, that's, hey, that was our own property, and that decision was made, and everything like that, but by the same token, we've got to be real careful of drawing circles and making sure that you're getting the best coverage, because you can see from that original circle, it's not the best coverage on the north end. Now, if we annex all the north, then hey, it'd be the greatest decision we ever made, but that's a long ways away. I agree, just my point.
Well, but there is possibility for growth to the north, there's not any possibility of growth to the south.
I agree with that.
Okay. So, basically, the only action, I mean, if, and I don't know, Madam City Attorney, if it takes a motion, or if the council is just okay with me going ahead and starting some negotiations, I would like to have something back at the next meeting, is what is my goal, to have it at the next meeting. And you don't have to necessarily take any action at that time, but hopefully, we can have that contract in the agenda and everything before we move forward.
I think a motion's in order.
Okay, all right.
I think a motion, that you can proceed with negotiations and bring it back to us at the next meeting.
Second.
That's fine, seconded.
Thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor to allow the mayor to enter into negotiations on certain properties for citing a fire station number two, but be sure to bring it back to the council for approval. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, if not, all is in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Thank you very much. Next item is revised bond project survey and tentative schedule, and I've got a revised survey, I've got a timeline, and I've got a revised future cities projects. These were all passed out at the bond workshop, except for one thing, there is on the back page of the sheet that's stapled together, is a revenue projection. Did you pass one to the, that's why I gave you extras over there. There's revenue projections for the indoor pool. I made this, it was Mr. Rayburn, I did run it by him. He didn't want responsibility for it, I don't think, though. But basically, what, and I'll tell you basically how this came about, is took the summer's revenue, the summer pool, the outdoor pools revenue, it's operated about three months out of the year, so, kind of said, okay, four times, all right? That's the basis for it, so I just want that to be very clear, that that's how I came up with the basis for it. It's not exactly right, you know, I mean, the individual memberships would have totaled three-hundred-and-twenty thousand if I took four times. The, the one thing with that, we don't have, that we get a revenue from right now is the swim team, we don't have a revenue, revenue from that, so I looked at Cabot's revenue and Bryant's revenue, and averaged those, it would have been twenty-eight thousand four hundred dollars, so I rounded to thirty thousand dollars on that one. So, so that's how that revenue came about, and when I included it in the survey, I listed it as four hundred thousand dollars, so, and that's not, I just, round numbers, more than anything else, is the reason that was done, so, but what I do want to mention is that the, the survey has been updated per what we discussed the other night at the bond workshop, the, the question about where, where certain facilities would be located, and where, I mean, like the underpass, overpass, there's three choices there, basically. Also added the line, please complete and return your survey by blank is there. So, that's what the council needs to know. Based on the timeline, we really need to get this survey back by May the fifteenth, so we really need to get this out. And the reason, May the fifteenth would give us then a couple of weeks to get it in, your first council meeting is in June, second, I believe, I looked at that, June second or third, it's, well, it's right, no, June's not on this calendar. It's very early in June, so it's the first or, well, second or third of June, I believe is when it is. So, it's very early, so that would give us up to like May the thirtieth to get the results tabulated and everything, because if we get them, send back paper copies, we're going to have to tabulate those results. Hopefully, we can get some back online and save us a little bit of trouble on that, but that's why we need action to move forward with this no later than the next council meeting, I think, as far as approval on this survey. I've been, you know, I've asked several times, if you see anything on it, you know, send me something, tell me something, do something, but I haven't received anything other than the comments that we got the other day, so, so we really need those if we want to try to get this out as soon as possible. But this is all trying to get at the election ordinance adopted on August the eighteenth. We have seventy days before the election, the election is November the fourth, and so that gave us a drop-dead date, I believe, of August the twenty-sixth. Yes, August the twenty-sixth, and so it has to be approved by the council by no, by no later than August the twenty-sixth. Our regular scheduled meeting would be August the eighteenth, that's before that meeting. Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed under the indoor aquatic center, and first of all, thank you for putting some kind of estimated revenue, I mean, it's just, you know, I, thank you.
I just wanted to, I did it, but I wanted you to know where I got my numbers from, so...
I know, and I understand, we don't have a crystal ball.
Okay, all right.
We don't live in a perfect world. Now, and this is a question.
Okay.
Do, do you think it would be appropriate, well, let me back up a step, it was suggested at the workshop meeting that we attach a quarter and, a quarter cent sales tax in order to ensure that we can meet the O and M expenses on this. If we in fact want to proceed with that, is that something that should be included in the survey?
Probably should be, I mean, if you, you know, so that if you want everything out there, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, but I wasn't, I mean, and like I say, I wasn't a hundred percent sure, I mean, Alderman Lewis proposed it, I think he got some comments that it was a good idea, but I never got really a consensus that that was what the whole council wanted to do. I believe I did hear one person say they couldn't support that, so, at least one, maybe more than that. So, so that's why it's not on here, but I'm, as I said, I don't have any qualms with amending this survey to include anything, and that's when I sat down the other night and said, okay, I'll come, I'll try to come up with a revenue number, so, on the pool, and so that's, so we can add that to it. I also, I did add under there, and this was suggested, I said, would you pay an annual membership fee of three hundred to four hundred dollars on the survey? Because that was also a question, I was concerned about putting a firm number in there, because then they would say, well, you've gone up on that firm number. You know, we might still have to go up on the four hundred dollars, you know, so that's a...
Yeah, now, that three to four hundred dollars, that's for a membership to the community center and the aquatic center?
No, that's to the aquatic center only.
Okay.
The way it's on here, and if you want me to clarify that, I can do that.
No, I, okay, thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Lewis?
I would have no issue with that question being on there, it might add a little bit more to the validity of asking that question to the community if they know that's on the table. But one thing I can promise you is that I've already had that conversation with Madam City Attorney, that ordinance asking for that sales tax question is already in the hopper and ready to go, and so we can ask that question certainly, but, you know, my, my position as an alderman is, is that question will not advance to the November ballot without a hearing for that sales tax question in this chamber. Now, it could get voted down.
Okay.
And again, just because I'm proposing that question, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean I'm going to vote for it in November, but I see it as a responsible way to ensure that, you know, we have a safety net there in place, should the revenue projections not be what they are, and should the expenses be higher, so. But it, it will be, if there is a question before this council for the indoor pool, that sales tax question will be brought up at the same meeting.
I just believe in full disclosure, even if that's something we're considering.
And, right, and I think that that could be a good idea, because bond, our bond council had indicated to us that disclosure is everything here, and so not only do we need to, you know, repeat that over and over again if that question goes further, but it wouldn't hurt to put it on the survey whatsoever. You know, I don't know exactly how you'd word that, we'd have to kind of sit down and think that, but I have no problem with it being there.
Maybe as a separate line, you've got four questions here, yes or no, maybe, maybe another one. Would you be willing to support it with a quarter cent?
I mean, at this point, I think it's important, and I'm not trying to nail anyone down tonight, but I, I think we as a council should probably make up our minds before we send this survey, if we're really serious about that tax being attached. I am, I'm absolutely certain about it, because I see no other method to guarantee the revenue other than that, and so, you know, to send it out and say, well, would you, do you want all these things, well, would you want it with a tax? Well, you might get a lot of people that'll say no, but that doesn't change my mind about putting it on there. It's, the two aren't separable in my eyes. So, I, as a body, I think we would be sending a much more cohesive question to the people if we knew that going in right now, or at least we had some sort of consensus. I don't know if that's possible, though.
And as I understood it, that, that question would be a part of the original ballot, so it'd have to be on all three readings of the ordinance, so it'd be just like the rest of the questions, so. So, it wouldn't be, it'd be discussed at more than one meeting, too.
Yes, absolutely.
So, yeah, yeah, and be voted on at one, basically, right, right. Alderman Johnson?
Just a thought along those lines, and I totally agree that we need to know what we're doing and, and everything like that, but, you know, we're specifically tying this down to the, this one project. Well, the Parks Department is a big department, and there's a lot of things in the Parks Department that need to be done, you know, maybe we could tie the quarter percent to the Parks Department. What is that, when they do with the Chamber of Commerce and all that?
Advertising and promotions.
Yeah, and that goes to the Parks Department, I think.
A portion of it, can.
A portion of, yeah. But anyway, you know, maybe it's the Parks Department, maybe it should be generalized, that if revenues are needed for the project, then it would be funded out of a quarter percent sales tax somehow, I'm just throwing that out. You specifically tying it to that project, now, what if they do well? What if they meet the, the mayor's perception or possibility?
Projections, yeah.
Projections, yeah, just, but they may be needed in another park area, maybe, I don't know.
Well, I think the other question is, you... Well, I think the other question is, you may meet it the first year because it's new and, and everybody joins. But then in subsequent years, you may not have the membership there.
On that line, if we did have a year where, let's say, we bring in 550,000 dollars from the tax, and our expenses that year, you know, net are only 300,000, would that money automatically fall to Parks and Rec as part of our financial practices?
Probably so.
So.
Based on, just based on the language in the ordinance, that's what it's about.
There you have it.
Okay. That answers my question.
Thank you. Alderman Hoag?
I actually think that if we're going to have the aquatic center, we're gonna have to have a mechanism to fund it. I spoke with several people who are supporting the center, and they would support the tax. So I, I feel like maybe that that's an indication that the tax would be supported. If we're going to send this survey out, I certainly think we need to put a line in there and ask if they would support the tax.
Okay.
Because they might support it, and then when we had to put the tax on, they might not. I just feel like that they need to know what they're supporting. I'd like to see the line item on there for the tax.
Okay. Alright. Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna put my cards on the table about, about the whole project here. I've, I've put a lot of thought into this. I've, I've looked at all the projects and, and everything. And, and I was very interested in getting the, the mayor's list of future projects. And I just, I just have to say that I'm, I'm really not in favor of even doing a, a bond election or an extension at this point. I mean, we're just, we're just one year into an eight-year extension of the 6.6 mil property tax. And we, we've got three big projects we're working on right now. And this would, I mean, there could be three to five more. It just seems like we've got a lot of things in the hopper, and maybe we should be kind of finishing up what we've already got going here before we go flying along. I'd feel much more comfortable waiting two to four years and, and looking at these things. And, and maybe including some of the items the mayor had here. We, we will know more about the I-40 interchange connection a couple of years from now and, and what kind of roads might be necessary. I just, I just hate to get mortgage to the hilt on the 6.6 mil in case we, we really have some project we need to finance. So, so I'm probably gonna not be voting for, to pass anything along as we go here. But I just wanted to let everybody know what my thoughts are. And if somebody else, if other people think the way I do, then this is probably a good time to, to kind of put the damper on it. Because a lot of work's gone into this, and there's still a lot more work to go. So, anyway, that's, that's the way I feel about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mosley. Alderman Johnson?
Just a question. Are you not concerned about what the people think? I mean, you're, you're saying your thoughts, but we, we haven't even polled the people. We don't, hey, they may reject it. Let's, let's listen to the people. And then we gotta make a big decision, you know, can we afford it and all that? I have no problem with what you said, but by the same token, you don't even want the people's input, I guess.
Well, to answer that, I, I think we're probably in the best position to be good stewards of, of what the city finances are here on the city council. If, if we don't think this is a good time for a bond election, then, then I think, I don't think we should leave it up to the, the people. Because there's a lot of people that, that do want these projects, but on the other, it just, to me, it's just not the right time. And, and we're, we're being charged with being the responsible people here in Maumell. And, and we shouldn't just go with whatever somebody wants, if that.
But we have the ability to do these projects without raising the taxes of the people, per se. Now, you can say, yeah, but we could pay it off. But then you gotta go through a process if you ever want to get it again, trying to get it back together.
Right. But, I mean, like there's, this, this one isn't gonna expire till 2020. It's not like it's gonna expire next year or the next. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
That's correct.
So, I mean, we've still got.
Seven plus years now. It was started in 2013. So, yeah, yeah.
Or one year into an eight-year deal. And I just, you know, I just think what we're doing here is we'll be foregoing possible other projects two to four years from now if, if we dive into all these. And a lot of these are, are wants as opposed to needs. And I, I just, I'm just not that comfortable with another bond project. Thank you. But I understand what you're saying, Alderman Johnson. Thanks.
Alderman Lewis?
Um, you know, what is the right answer there? I, I do think we'd be better served to look at the, um, the results of the survey once they come back. It doesn't, you know, I think us having that dialogue with the community is certainly going to be helpful. One thing I think we do need to be mindful of is we are coming, at least there appears to be the appearance that we are coming out of some economic doldrums, and there's finally the chance to sort of come out of this. You know, last year we had in the 40s, I think, on total new home starts in Maumell. That's, I mean, that is scary low when you look at, yes, sir?
Seventy-six.
Is that, that was permits on new homes? Okay, 76 last year. And so that is still very, very low when you compare that to 2007, 2008, back in that era. Now, we seem to be coming out of this. You know, we are looking forward, at least if we're following this document right here. I hope we are looking forward. And what sets us up to that? You know, what, what is the linchpin to get us on that wave once the economy starts to pick up? And offering amenities, you know, you can call them wants, and I, I think that's not necessarily inappropriate to label them that. But they're also amenities that help to improve the quality of life of the citizens that you have, but also to attract as well. Now, if we're attracting, the question might be is where are we gonna put them? Because we do have, you know, a bit of a land shortage right now. And so, you know, the right answer? I, I don't think it's total austerity where you say no to all of them. But there has to be a pragmatic approach. I think we'll have that discussion certainly, I think, in June, once we've got the results of the survey and we've all reviewed them. To me, I think it's, you know, somewhere in between. And we've got to decide what can we do right now to better our community, to ride that economic wave and to be, you know, responsive to the needs of our citizens and the wants. And also, what can we do to still save a little bit of money behind? Because there are gonna be needs. There's gonna be possibilities that we're gonna have to look to grow to the north for future annexations, possibly for, you know, utility setups and that sort of thing. So this is the process we have. And I think we'll find that somewhere in between. I would like to get this survey out sooner rather than later. Is there, I just ask this question. Is there any need for us to talk about this survey for one more meeting?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Well, I am still concerned with disclosing the quarter.
And we can.
No, I understand that. I don't have.
We can make that motion tonight to go forward with that, with that stipulation. And that's, that's not an issue either. One thing though, I will say, and just, because you, when you send this out, you want to get the most valid return that you can, that tells you the most information. If you put that on there, you know, do you want this? Do you want this? Do you want this? Will you pay for this? Yes, 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 no. And you could see a pretty big disparity between the yeses and then the no's on that question. Now, in my mind, this thing doesn't go past without that. So maybe that is your answer. But in the interest of disclosure, I'll ask one more time, would it be better that we just go ahead now as a council and say, yes, this is a package deal and that tax will be part of this? What is the point of separating it if we all feel that way? Or at least if most of us feel that way?
I agree. I totally agree too. I, I feel like it's a package deal, and then just disclose it as a package deal.
Does that need to be in the form of a motion?
Yes, yeah.
And I made that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second that the half-cent sales tax be a part of the, any questions related to the indoor aquatic center?
A quarter.
Oh, I'm sorry, quarter cent.
I may have said half. I did. Mr. Sandland's looking at me soon. Yeah, you did. Sorry. Sorry.
Quarter cent. Alright, let me, yeah, I've written down half also, so yeah. We just gained 500,000 dollars real quick. Alright, so a quarter cent sales tax?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Alright, I've got lights on. Is it on the question that we have before? Is yours Alderman Kelly also?
I just want to make the comment. You know, I, I agree. We need to get the survey out right away and let the, the public tell us what they want. Keep in mind though, bond prices have never been cheaper than they are and have been the last couple of years. So if projects, if the public decides they want these projects, then I think we need to go forward. Because five years down the road, they may be double what the cost is now. So being good stewards of our money, we need to also think about the future. That's all I have.
Alderman Saunders?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Well, with respect to the current motion that's on, on the floor, I don't have a problem with that. But then again, there is something I do have a problem with. I don't know that we need to make that decision right now. I would still be curious to hear if we had a separate line item question here. I would like to hear what the public says about that. And we might find a disparity in numbers there that says, or we might find an agreement in numbers, and then we have support for making the decision rather than just arbitrarily making the decision right now. I mean, what's to be gained by not waiting until the next meeting?
I thought the motion included adding that to it though, right?
It did. It did. But I think the motion was, and maybe I misunderstood. I thought the motion was that we as city council would make it an all or nothing quarter cent sales tax. Is that?
Well, I didn't make the motion. It might be better quite, opposed to Alderman Hoag.
But here's the.
Well, I meant for it to be an all or nothing.
And that's what I seconded.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm not.
We need to have the funding vehicle in place to support the aquatic center.
I agree with that. I agree with that. But I'm wondering if.
But here's, here, hold on for just a second though. You're gonna see an ordinance that, the actual ballot, you're gonna have to vote on that. This is not binding you to anything other than the council feels right now, based on the survey we're gonna send out, that, that you think it's prudent that a quarter cent sales tax be there to cover the O and M. It's, it's what I'm hearing, I think. But you will have another vote that you will have to take in order to make that go on the ballot. And then it's, then it's up to the people. I mean, no, well, it's up to the people to vote for it or against it. But then the council, if one of them fails, and let's say the pool passes, the question for the pool with the village passes, but the sales tax fails, that's when the council then would have to say, we can't do it. I mean, that's what they would have to do. You could, yes.
Yeah. I mean, that's part of the disclosure way up front.
Right. If it, if they both don't pass, the project doesn't go forward.
And, and not to speak for their motion, but in my eyes, what I suggested there was that in that question, you know, do you support this project? Somewhere in that language in there, it stipulates that there will be a quarter cent sales tax attached to this process. That's in my mind what I believe Alderman Hoag had indicated. And the question I would ask, and I understand you, you're saying, well, are we certain we want to do that right now? Is there a scenario, Alderman Saunders, where you would swing without that net?
No, but I would feel more comfortable if we had a survey, if we had a separate line item question here, would you support the aquatic center if it was attached to a quarter percent? And I saw the numbers come back in overwhelmingly saying yes, then now we have support for what we're doing.
I, I think I understand your point.
And I even think that it can be worded that way. You know, it says right here, do you support this project? Like, have the ability to say yes or no? Would you use the facility if constructed? Da-da-da. Then down on, somewhere in there say, would you support a once quarter cent sales tax with, or O and M for this project? You're gonna be able to see right there. If they say, yes, they support this project, but no, they do not support the tax, we're gonna know right there. I mean, I think that's gonna take care of your concerns.
Yes, no, that would be in addition.
Well, it will. And, and it's really not that scenario that I'm concerned with. It's just adding, rather than us arbitrarily making a decision, that the only way we're going to, to include an aquatic center on the ballot is if it does include a quarter percent. Now, I might feel that way.
Saying that in this survey. And we're, you know, when we come back and all of us discuss the results of the survey, that's when the ultimate decision's gonna be made whether we do or whether we not. Even though I think that we need that quarter cent sales tax, Alderman Lewis is even more concerned about it probably than me. I don't have to make that decision tonight, or I don't have to make that decision when this survey comes back. I make that, well, I made that motion to put it on here.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood you.
That still doesn't mean that I'm going to vote. That's the way I feel in August or whenever it is we get ready. But we have to have that tax. I think it has to be on there to let the people know that we're considering it. We, they need to know if they vote for it, that, that we're looking at a quarter cent sales tax to, for the O and M.
Well, I misunderstood the motion. I thought, if it's to put it on here, yes, I agree.
It absolutely is for here. It has nothing to do with the, with the, when we get to the ordinance.
Okay.
Just, just for clarification, the, the only thing on the table for discussion or adoption tonight is the survey.
Right.
The survey, when the survey comes back, even if it's 100% in favor, the city council will still have to adopt an ordinance for the bond election and for any sales tax election. Those will be separate, although they may, may track at the same time. They're gonna be separate ordinances. So, you know, don't, I, I don't want you to be concerned that you're, you're doing something tonight that you won't have an opportunity to consider again. You'll have not only another opportunity, but you'll have three readings of each one of those ordinances after the survey comes back. And then beyond that, you have the ultimate assurance that the people will do what the people desire to do. And so regardless of if you, you're just putting the, the only thing you're voting for is to put the ordinance, the election out there. You're not making the decision on whether or not it will, it will be actually adopted.
Okay, I'm happy.
Yeah, I would like to say.
Okay, Alderman Lewis?
And I think it's all a matter, sometimes this is the process. You weed through some of the semantics of everything. And once you explained it that second time, Alderman Saunders, I think I understood it perfectly, which is, you know, let's have that question separately on there within that column, so we kind of know, uh, everybody's gonna put their money where their mouth is. And if you have a lot of people who are going different ways and you sort of sense, eh, you know, is there really that much concrete support perhaps? And the one thing I'll say, one more thing about this, is that I think, and this is just in my eyes, whether you want the pool or you don't want the pool, I think that this is the perfect compromise to that. And what I mean by that is, is if you want it, here's the opportunity possibly, and I'm not saying we're gonna approve it. I don't even know if I'm gonna still vote to put it on the ballot. But if you like it, then here it's gonna be its chance to sink or swim. We'll put it on there. We'll see what happens. And those people that have wanted it for so long, finally will have that opportunity to say, okay, you believe in it, here's where it goes. Now, on the other hand, if you don't want the pool, you have a chance to rally against it as well. I will say, if you look into the election tea leaves, this is not a good year to have any kind of tax question on the ballot. We've seen a millage question that went down in flames. We've seen that happen in other counties as well recently. This is a very austere midterm election voting crowd out there. It could be a rough year for that as well. So all things to sort of take into consideration. But, you know, perhaps we put it out there, maybe we don't. We'll have that discussion.
Thank you, Alderman Lewis. Alderman Johnson?
Well, basically, following up what he said to, to an extent, you know, the eight of us is gonna be the decision makers, per se, when it's all bowels down. Well, hey, you look at your budget numbers, look at your projections and saying, what if we build this thing and we can't fund it? Where do we go then? There we got a $7 million project out there and we can't even fund it. And you tell me between now and 2011, we gonna have excess funds? Look at your budget. Look at your projections. We not gonna have any excess funds? If we don't get some kind of pickup to guarantee it, we're going out on a limb. You wouldn't do it for your family. You wouldn't go, if you, if you had a raise coming, you wouldn't, you'd wait till you got that raise before you did something. And you know, I, I think this is what we're looking at to make sure that we put $7 million in a project that we can pay for the function of it. Cause if, worst thing to do is come up and be $200,000 of short of funding it. And that's the aid of our, our decisions. Because that's where we step in the, hey, we step in the ring then. Big time.
Thank you, Alderman Johnson. Alderman Norris?
I believe the motion has morphed a little bit since it was first introduced. If, if we could have that restated.
I was gonna say, I don't think it can't, it can't morph actually, unless it's amended. So it should be the same question, just the survey. That's.
I don't believe that was the original motion.
Well, I'm gonna ask the original person who made the motion to.
Not so sure how to get this out there, but my intention was to put on the survey the question, would you support a quarter cent sales tax to fund O and M? the question, "Would you support a quarter cent sales tax to fund O and M if we build the aquatic center?"
Okay. Who had the second on that?
I did, you did. That's the way I understand it.
Sounds good, sounds good.
Does that answer your question, Alderman Norris?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on that motion? Alderman Mosley? Okay, all right. Do you wanna speak later? I'll leave, oh, okay, okay, all right, all right. We have a question before the council, and the motion's been made to add a separate line item under the portion on the survey of, under the indoor aquatic center, that would you support a ha- a quarter cent sales tax to cover operation and maintenance? I, I've scribbled through it, it's hard to read now.
Jananne, you'll have to keep him straight.
Will, will do.
It, you, you will see this before it actually goes out, I promise you that. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all is in favor, please signal of us saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Okay, is there anything else that, and this is under Mayor's comments, but is there anything else we need to discuss? Uh, I, I do wanna say one thing on the future city projects. I added the three that were mentioned at the bond workshop the other night, Parkland Entertainment District and Town Square Center for possible land purchases. That's the only amendment that's been made to that project list.
Alderman Lewis?
We had had the discussion too at our bond council meeting, or bond workshop meeting, excuse me, whatever we're calling it these days. We had had that discussion also about possibility of combining two or three projects into, or possibly four, in one location, one that's already guaranteed to be built, being the fire station. But possibly combining them in a mutual area. And, uh, Mr. Mayor and I sat down and visited the other day. I don't know if, you know, just to put that out there before the council, I had asked Mr. Mayor if we would look into perhaps some scenarios to where we could do that, perhaps talk to some architects about a possibility of looking at that. And I just wanted to see if that is something also that the other Aldermen are in favor of, um, just to make sure that I'm not sending the mayor down a rat hole, and everybody else is saying, "No, I don't like that," so.
Alderman Mosley?
Uh, yeah, I, I mentioned the other night, I thought that was an intriguing idea. And, and I would, would hope that we'd, we'd give it thought in the proper manner. I don't know with the, the way this thing, this is on a, a fast bus here. I don't know if it'll all happen, but that'd be another good reason to, to put this off for another two or four years if I can start recruiting folks to think like me. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mosley. Alderman Anderson?
Yeah, I, I totally support the idea. I think that's really outside of the box thinking, and I think it's a great idea. And I, I, I mean, it can't hurt to, to look into it. And, um, I wish I would've came up with the idea, actually.
Thank you. Alderman Hoag?
Actually, the building he had, uh, as an example, was great. Um, I think I heard someone say last night, "Were we, to do that, it would be like $18 million for that one facility." Did I hear that?
Uh, I, I don't know if you did or not. I don't know, where'd you hear that?
Which is at the bond workshop.
Oh, you said last night, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, at the bond workshop.
Uh, I don't-
I don't remember that number being bandied about. Now, the building, I mean, the photograph of that building, I might've said the actual cost, cause you were sitting next to me. The actual cost of that building was that much, but obviously you're gonna scale it to an appropriate level.
You know, it, it sounds good, and it looked good, but I'm afraid that if we do that thing, it will take every bit of the bond money that we have to work with.
And I, I wouldn't even chance to venture a price on it right now. I do know that if you do a multi-story building, you have to do extra foundation, and your beams have to be bigger than if you do a one-story facility and that sort of thing. That, I mean, so-
I was also wondering, in that specific location, if we do put the fire station there, and then I think that would leave about four acres. Would that actually leave enough, uh, parking spaces after the footprint of the building for the three facilities?
And that's why Alderman Lewis has kinda asked, maybe we need an architect to look at it, and give us their opinion, yeah.
And I don't have a problem with them looking, but I am a little bit leery of being able to do it.
You just go by the eyeball test. I mean, hey, I'm not an architect. I can't tell you, uh, how big and the parking needs and everything, even the cost, per se. I do know this, if you combine all those projects together, it was about 10-point-something million. You know, perhaps if you get something that's even a bigger attraction piece in that 11 million, you know, 10 to $12 million range, maybe, I don't know. The only thing about that scenario is, is if you like that idea, uh, there's no way you can do the pool and those at the same time. But it does put a lot together, and it's the only plan right now that gets us to where we can sell this property that we're sitting on right now as well. So, something to think about.
Alderman Saunders?
First off, I compliment you, Alderman Lewis. I, um, I'm all into thinking outside the box, okay? And you certainly did that. And, and I agree with Alderman Mosley, it's an intriguing idea. I'm not saying I'm against it, but I am a little concerned with that particular location. Because what we are doing, if we were to choose that particular location, is we're kinda making that this town center, and I don't think that's a real good spot for the town center. It's kinda trapped right in there in that little corner between Valencia Residential and Kroger. And it doesn't give space for the town center to grow. If it was in the middle of Track D, that's different, you know? So maybe we might consider another location, too, so. But it is an intriguing idea. That, that's all I've got to say.
Alderman Norris?
I'm concerned with how that fits in with our current regime, or, or our current track with the bond proposals, is that, you know, all these other ones, we're about to send a survey out, and if we have this other idea, are we suggesting adding another, you know, paragraph here? Or is this something that's even slayed, that would even be possible to get on this ballot? Because it hasn't gone through the entire process? Or I just wanna know, what do we, we've, we've got an idea that may or may not be good. It definitely is, uh, interesting. Uh, and so if we wanna follow that, how do we incorporate that in our current system? Does anyone know?
And, and the, my concern with that is, I don't think we have enough time to get enough information to add it to this survey. So, so that's gonna be an issue. But just because to get questions from an architect, get an estimated amount and all that, I think the, the survey's gonna have to be mailed out by then, so, yeah. So that, that's my concern. We're trying to do that now. All right, we do have a question on the floor, though, on one item. I wanna revert back if we can. Or do we, did we pass that? No, I didn't think we did. All right, all right. Before we get another amendment, and that's what I was afraid was about to happen, but, uh, we have a motion on the floor to add a line item to the survey. We got that. We, we voted on that? Okay, all right, good then. Okay, all right, I'm good then. All right, sorry. I lost track. I didn't write it down that we voted on. All right.
Um, one thing I would add to answer your question is, there reaches a point, and, you know, Alderman Mosley touched on this earlier, where you are good stewards, and you were elected for a purpose, and that is to sort of vet some of these, you know, ideas and processes. And sure, it's a fast-moving bus, but I like to think this is a city that's moved quickly since it founded. And, um, I will say that we'll judge the results of the survey based on the wants and the needs of this community, whether it's a senior center or an event center. And, you know, look at this in the greater context. And if we're seeing a heavy buy-in for two or three of these, and the chance to do a cost savings, then maybe it's worth taking a look at. And as to, you know, possible town centers and everything, again, I'm going largely by this document here. And, um, are there ideas about Track D that I've got? Sure. If you'd like to talk with me about them, Alderman Saunders, I'd be more than happy to visit with you. But perhaps in conjunction with, like you said, the park, Track D, our biggest retailer in our community, and then right in there with the community center, there's a lot of things about it that could work, possibly, so.
Yeah, I, I feel like that Track D might be, be a good idea, too. You know, what you're talking on, I, I've always hoped that Track D could be something like, like, uh, Santa Fe, New Mexico. Where maybe you have your, your city hall, and you have a town square with a bandstand, surrounded by retail shops and things like that. That, to me, would be the ideal town center for Maumell. And, and again, that's one of the reasons, I, I hate to rush ahead on some of these things, if, if it would work in that direction at some point, uh, I'd hate to forego that opportunity. Thank you.
Okay.
One small comment.
Alderman Johnson?
Yeah, just following it up. There are some items here, though, that are just absolutely needed and everything. You know, we need to move along on some of them, and we'll find out from the people which those are. You know, hey, the ballparks. You know, I don't think there's anybody gonna fight over the ballparks and the need for them and everything like that. So, you know, I don't worry about, I worry about the future, but by the same token, we have some things that could have an immediate impact on our city.
Okay, all right. On the survey, I'm gonna make some revisions to it. I'm gonna run it back by the council so they can see it before it goes out. I'm gonna check with our distributor and see what dates they can work this in and get it out to. And then bef- before I send it back, cause basically, I'm gonna ask them to turn their survey, and then it may shorten our timeframe, but we, my goal is to have this back and then tabulated by the first meeting in June to the city council. So when I, the May 15th may slide slightly, just because the, to get it mailed out and everything, it gives people adequate time, which I think it's a short time period. I think two weeks is plenty of time for them to have it. Cause if it lays there too long, they're gonna forget about it anyway and not mail it back. But if we can't get it out till May the 5th, it may slide till May the 19th or something like that to get it back to us. Then the timeframe is on city hall to get it tabulated in order for the meeting on June 1st, or June 3rd, whatever that date is.
We are still talking about just one page, front and back?
Yes, that's the plan, yes, yes, yeah, yeah. We may have to change font again, if we add any more, margins and font and anything else, but yeah. And then they may, they may add pages when they mail it back. That's happened in the past, too.
They're the margins and not the fonts.
Okay, all right. We will do our best. The margins have already been reduced a little bit to try to fit it on there. All right, so I, I will get this done. I'll try to get it out to y'all this week, and then get your approval before it goes out. Uh, next item under Mayor's comments is Easter egg hunt, April the 19th at 9:00 a.m. at the Rolling Oaks Soccer Complex. In case of rain, it will be moved to the community center at 9:30. Easter sunrise service will be April the 20th at 6:45 a.m. at, uh, the amphitheater at Lake Willistee. So, uh, we're gonna have pretty weather there that day, we hope. Uh, but it's, uh, being supported again by the Maumell Methodist Church, and Freedom Baptist is also, uh, a sponsor of that event this year. So hope to have a lot of people come out for that. The, uh, city and the, this isn't on your item, but I, I felt like I needed to mention it. The city and the Maumell Chamber hosted a job fair last Friday at the Maumell Community Center. And we had 220 attendees with 24 businesses looking for, uh, employees. And, uh, that wasn't as many attendees as we had two years ago when we did one. But the businesses told us they liked, liked it better a little bit, and, and people mentioned it because it gave them more time one-on-one with the applicants. Basically, they got a feel for them, even talking to them right there, whether they were a good candidate for the positions they had available. Because last time, there were so many people, basically, they were just handing out applications and taking them back, and they didn't get a chance to have one-on-one conversation. Uh, but, uh, Ms. Judy Keller, uh, with the Community Economic Development Office, uh, Courtney Dunn, my assistant, helped with that. Megan helped with that. And, uh, they had lots of help. And then Tara and Alicia from the Chamber were heavily involved in that also. So they did a great job on that Friday. The state supported us real well on that also, with the governor's dislocated workforce out there. And they had their workforce services truck, they could help do resumes, print off more copies and everything. The only other thing I wanna mention real quick, in conjunction with job fairs, Skyzone is having a job fair next Thursday afternoon at the Jess Odom Community Center from 3:30 to 6:30. They're mainly looking for part-time individuals, 15 to 25 hours per week. So if you've got some, uh, young people looking for some jobs or, or something like that. But April the 10th, Thursday, 3:30 to 6:30. That's all the, uh, comments I have. Next item is Planning Commission Report, and Alderman Mosley has that.
Yes, I did. Uh, we had the, uh, Planning Committee, uh, Planning Commission, uh, meeting, uh, I guess it was on, it was two weeks after, uh, about March 27th, I guess. And there was only one item. They were addressing, uh, the idea of putting, right now, there's not the ability to have a car wash here in Maumell. Uh, the ones, we have two here, and one of them came in under the grandfather clause, and the other one came in, I guess, as a, an automotive thing, but that was deemed not really the proper way to do it. So, uh, they're gonna be sending us a, an ordinance, maybe at the next meeting, to, uh, approve the ability to have a car wash by conditional use in the C1, C2, uh, PCD, PRD areas, and then, uh, by right in C3, C4 areas. So, uh, it was modeled after kinda what North Little Rock and Little Rock were doing, I think.
And you will see that on the next council meeting. That comes onto the council for the approvals. Thank you, Alderman Mosley. Alderman's comments? Alderman Johnson?
There was an interesting article in the paper this morning about fire station and fire station ratings. And one of the ones that popped into my mind, and, uh, I'd like to ask that the fire chief, uh, come back and give us some kind of report. It's my understanding that we were a three for many, many years. We built a brand-new fire station. We didn't become a two. Uh, it's my understanding there's not many twos and many ones in Arkansas. I'd like to know how many there are, or I think the council should know how many there are, what process. So we're gonna build another fire station if we're still a three, and we're out promising people reduced, uh, insurance, and that doesn't happen, it makes us look really bad. Now, I know he can't guarantee what that board or whoever it is is gonna say, but I think we ought to have some kind of direction, because if we're promising the people less insurance costs, then we ought to be able to-
Nobody's promising less insurance. That has not been said at all.
So we're, we're a three now, so we don't, if we become a two, we won't save money?
Well, yeah, if you become a two, you will save money, but nobody's said by building this fire station, we will move to a two.
Well, what assurance, in other words, why build it if we're already a three?
Cause you could go to a four.
You could go to a four?
Absolutely.
How much would it cost?
To go to a four?
No, and hey, I know, and that's all I'm asking. Maybe we ought to have some direction for someone that has the knowledge, so that we know what's going on.
But if you read that article today, it mainly talked about volunteer stations. It's what it was mainly talking about, and it was talking about nine and 10 ratings is what it was talking about. Uh, that a lot of the cities in Arkansas with volunteer small departments, that's where they're at. And it's even hard to get insurance in those. So when they can go to a paid staff and that sort of thing, that's, can reduce theirs. But, uh, we'll, I'll have Chief Payne work on something, uh, to give you some, some, uh, specifics maybe on what it takes. But it's, uh, it's, no one has said, because this station is being built, that that would automatically reduce the ISO rating.
I bet the people have the perception it will, but that's-
I don't know how they've gotten that, because that's not been mentioned at all, so. Until this conversation just now. Alderman Kelly?
Just one comment. Uh, I've read similar articles. I read one this morning, as a matter of fact, wasn't in the same paper. And basically what has happened is the National Fire Protection Association, which is one standard, NFPA, and ISO, which is the insurance standard, they have combined a standard, and that's gonna be one standard for all.
Okay, that makes sense.
That's the big change that's going on right now. And, uh, I believe that, uh, I think that standard starts being adopted here in Arkansas in July. Is that correct, Chief? So there's, there's more to this, but the danger, the, the concern I have as a citizen and as an Alderman is that we, our fire rating moves from a three to a four. Guarantee prices will go up.
Yep.
Now, there's always a possibility we can go from a three to a two, and that would help us. But, uh, but that's the big change, is the standard itself has changed.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I just, I, I've had people ask me, and I, I thought I'd just ask for a- Yeah, just, I've had people ask me, and I thought I'd just ask for a quick clarification, as far as parks and their hours, and there's, you know, there's, most of our parks have gates on them, do we actually lock the gates at closing time, or do we just say they're closed, and then people are in trouble if they're still in there?
They're, they're just closed, and then they will be arrested if they're in there, be given a citation, and the reason we've done that is, at the recommendation of the police department, if they have to get out and unlock a gate, it allows people the chance to get away, basically, because some people don't always drive in there, they walk in there. If the police are able to just drive into the gates and then see them, then they, they can, it's easier for the police to witness the activity that's being done in there. Now, we don't, the only place that I know that we have gates, and Phillip, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the parking lots, we've got them at the Rolling Oaks Soccer Complex, and then at Park on the River. Now, we've got gates that we can lock, the baseball fields and the softball fields, but as far as drive-through traffic, we can't lock up the, those gates. Phillip?
The baseball complex has one gate on, but it doesn't on those, so you see that it does.
Okay, all right.
So we never, like I said, we never really locked that, but we do lock those.
Okay, so we don't really lock the gates, and is Park on the?
Park on the River, it does get locked, yes.
And that is considered a park, is that what you said?
That is considered a park, yes, yes.
And Park on the River does get locked?
Yes, it, it was, it was supposed to be getting locked, it wasn't always getting locked, but we've worked on that, it's getting locked, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Because it's in a very secluded area that, and they can get to and be out of sight of a lot of people down there. The other parks are predominantly in more traveled areas.
All right, all right, thank you.
But there, it's still a violation if you're in the park, and I believe the hours, we just changed that, is it 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.?
I believe that's correct.
I believe that's the hours of the park, and we can verify that, but I believe those are it.
One of the questions at one time on that was, what if a fisherman's down in the river and everything, he's got his boat in and everything, and we lock it, you know, how does he get out and everything? I guess he'd have to call the police department, yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other Alderman's comments? Madam City Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. City Clerk?
I would just note the vacancy in the Civil Service Commission and the Charter School Board coming up.
Okay, if there's no other items, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
That's moved.
Second.
The motion's second that the council adjourned, is there any discussion on that motion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Yes, saying yes.
Both.
Any opposed, say no. Man, hadn't done that in a while.
I was thinking earlier about, you know, the fire station rating.
Who was it, it's been the job fair?